Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May 23rd, meeting of the Reno County Commission. Second item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll have a prayer by Pastor Ted Blakely of Grace Episcopal Church.
The Pledge of Allegiance, stick the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Let us open with just a moment of silence.
Oh God, you made us in your own image. Look with compassion on the whole human family. Take away the arrogance and hatred which infect our hearts. Break down the walls that separate us. Unite us in bonds of love and concern. And work through our struggle and confusion to accomplish your purposes in this community. So that the good of all might be made manifest. It's in the name of your Son and in the power of your Spirit that we pray these words. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Okay, welcome. I don't have any other announcements this morning. Is there anyone here for public comment that's not on the agenda? Are there additions or revisions?
Commission?
Item six is the consent agenda. There are motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Bogner. For a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Hurst. Discussion? None? Roll call please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item seven A is review and approve the Pishney closeout documents. Randy, do you want to start? Is there staff?
Harland's here and this is, sorry I lost the agenda for a second. This is the Pishney project, the courthouse, the dome, the weatherization and window project. This is to close it out. There was some adjustments in the amount. There were some items that may not have been completely finished by Pishney. That they gave us credit for so we didn't pay the full hundred percent of their project. Harland, Patrick and I had discussed, you know, what made sense. So that's what's before you is. So GLMV charged, they had, on their portion of, there was a little bit of additional cost for the amount of time and the checklist items. So their increased amount would be offset some of the credits we get back from Pishney. So we still, we would have to write another check to GLMV for their additional work, but then get credit from change order of amount 12,850. That's the net amount. So we're asking that you approve this deduct change order in the amount of 12,850. Authorize the chair to sign the change order, the certificate of substantial completion and approve final pay applications from Pishney Restoration and GLMV to close out the project. Once that's approved and the money's been sent, that project will be completed. And we won't be paying GLMV or Pishney anymore money. Harland, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
I think that sums it up pretty well.
Okay.
Other questions? Did they ever fix that on the front of the courthouse where the, that black framed window, like where it looked like oil had spilled? Did they get all that fixed? Is there a motion to approve staff recommendation?
Motion to approve it.
Commissioner Parks' motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bogner. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. The next item on the agenda, seven B, is a change order request for courthouse improvements for historic features of two rooms on the first floor to be visible. Discussion on this?
Can I get a better explanation of what it is? I couldn't picture it in my mind.
Right. Okay, so where Shonda, in the Commission Administration Office, where Shonda sat and where I used to sit, or no, not where, where Leslie used to sit. There are some beams and some of the, and the crown molding. I don't think we'll get, be able to show the crown molding, but we thought instead of having the drop ceilings that were maybe eight feet off the ground, raise that, try to get a little bit more of the historical look of the courthouse for those rooms that are most prevalent with the architecture. So by doing that, then that means the lighting and the different utilities that are up, wiring has to be moved also and changed. That's why there would be a change order and then the additional cost of 52,984 and then GLMV an additional $1,000 for the drawings they would create with that. That would also put a little bit of a delay in the project, probably, I'm not sure how much, a couple of weeks, a month, possibly that for Ward Davis to work on. But it was to try to keep some of the historic look in those rooms mainly. It won't change the rooms like where the commission used to be, commission office or over in HR. Nothing's changed over there.
And what are we moving back into those rooms? When this renovation's done?
So those will be, where Leslie used to be, that's going to be a break room now for people on the first floor. And then Shonda will be back in the main portion where she was before. So that's kind of what we're.
Those beams are right in there. So are the, are they going to be seen a lot by the public?
Well, it depends how often they walk in there. Not a lot, it's just was to kind of get rid of whenever, 20, 30 years ago, whatever it was, when drop ceilings were put in place, that makes it look less like the historic, the architecture that it had. So it's not essential, it's more for the aesthetics.
And this is something can be done in the future if, if needed or because of the wiring stuff, it'd be difficult to do it in the future?
Yeah, it's probably would, and it may cost more because they're already mobilized now. But I don't know. Harland may have a better answer to that.
What was the scope for the ceiling in there? What was going to happen if we didn't raise it up to show the beams?
It was just going to be where it.
Another drop ceiling?
Yeah, the way it was before.
What's the ceiling up in the beams going to be?
Same.
Same.
Drop ceiling?
Yeah, it'd still be a drop ceiling, just be higher up to show some of the beams and some of the texture.
I might, I can, I can admit I might have instigated some of this when I walked through there and said, why, there's all this nice crown molding and, and all this, you know, historic stuff and like, why? First of all, why did we cover it up in the first place? And I, I guess they did that for whatever reason, but the, I was surprised at the cost of this. I didn't, and what I might recommend is we table this a week. And then you guys just go tour and see if there's anything worth saving. I don't know if I could, it doesn't feel like there's strong consensus about spending another 52,000 on, on some architectural enhancements. But maybe if you look at it, maybe there's something we would like to do. Might be worth looking at before you make a decision.
Yes. The major costs from what I read are going through the floor and up twice and then back down. Is there any way we could not go through that floor and all that expense and, and bring a race weight down? Because when you saw on concrete and stuff, it takes a lot of time and stuff. But would there be a better way to expose that and, and a less expensive way to expose?
I'm not sure, Harland, do you have an answer?
The, yes, you're correct. A lot of the expense was in rerouting, a lot of the electrical work. And I think to some extent that's probably why that drop ceiling was put in, you know, back in the seventies or whatever, was so that you could get better lighting in there, make it easier to run cabling for computers and all that. It provided that, that channel for that kind of cabling to run. By raising that, it does create some real challenges to get into those cavities to run power. And with, with the renovations up on the mezzanine and getting power, adequate power up there for staff to move up there, that's where a lot of this, this expenses is coming from is, is some really creative ways to get power from the first floor up into the second floor through those cavities that now don't have good access.
But originally there was some cost, I think somebody alluded to that. Originally there would have been some cost to do the renovation and some of that was in lighting and stuff. I guess we're interested, the difference apparently is this 52,900.
I really liked the idea when Randy showed me that. When I seen this cost, I had no idea it was going to be 54,000. As far as. $1,000 for a drawing and 52,984. I, I've got second thoughts about it.
I mean, if it was a major entryway to the courthouse and you didn't want to put suspended ceiling, it'd be one thing, but it's really not public access point, so I'm not sure it's that valuable to us.
Harland, is there another way to do this or is this the only way?
Well, we spent a fair amount of time, Ward did and his, his guys and mine as well, looking at as many different options as we could come up with. Basically to get power and cabling into those two rooms, if we raise that ceiling, it would either have to go back down into the basement, the power and cabling would, and then up into the rooms through some sort of a surface mounted chase of some kind to get back up above the ceiling. Or you're creating a chase on one end or the other of that beam that runs across the top that we're exposing, which then kind of in some way sort of defeats the purpose raising the ceiling because now we're covering those beams back up, or at least partially in order to get cable underneath them again. So I, I guess my opinion is this is probably the best way to do it, to keep things clean and, and accomplish what, what we're trying to accomplish by trying to get the historic elements back into the, into the room.
Well, what I would suggest for the commission is either, somebody, if you guys want to look at it, obviously, somebody can motion to table it. If you don't, then I'm going to expect nobody's going to make any motion here.
Has everyone looked at it?
I have.
Sorry.
I didn't look at it.
Not hearing any motions to approve or table this, so we'll call it denied.
Okay.
Thanks, Harland. Appreciate it. Thanks, Ward. Seven C is a resolution for the solid waste C and E fees?
Yeah. Commissioners, last time we met, we had a discussion about solid waste fees in general. Staff recommended no change for the municipal solid waste, so that's incorporated into the proposed resolution that I was tasked with drafting. There was also a lot of discussion about construction and demolition tipping fees and there's, and so I've drafted for a discussion and approval. The resolution which says, commercial construction and demolition debris will be subject to the $10 per ton fee. Non-commercial construction demolition would not be under this resolution. And the county staff will be doing kind of a cursory review as things come in to determine if something's commercial, but generally if it doesn't appear to be commercial, they're going to allow it to be dumped without fee. That's what I've drafted. Now, there's a lot of debate or discussion, maybe that debate last time, so I'm not sure everyone's at, but that's what I've drafted for you guys to consider.
Questions? Just what we talked about? To approve?
A motion to approve it.
Commissioner Parks' motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Weitzel. Any final discussion? On seven C? Roll call please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Trying to sift through all this paperwork up here. Item 70 is a revision to the commission meeting guidelines. I think the, there are a couple of things that we did here. One was amend the, the meeting date for July, when we're starting our new meeting day of the week, which should be the second, fourth and fifth Wednesdays. And then while we're at it, we took a moment to enhance some language around meeting protocol, mainly to provide some guidance to whomever the chair is on how the meeting should be operated. And staff suggested using the NACO, the National Association of Counties document on the right way to run a meeting and it's broadly drafted around Robert's Rule of Order.
I would describe it as, is Robert's Rule of Order, it just, where Robert's Rule of Order is this thick, it is the parts of Robert's rules that are most likely to apply to a commission meeting. And you know, as I was thinking about how to, why, how to describe doing that, if it, if there's a motion or if there's a parliamentary procedure that doesn't fit the NACO rules, I would suggest this body not enter into anything that complicated and maybe just, you know, keep our motions and our parliamentary as simple as we can. Good meetings are run so that everyone understands exactly what the parliamentary order's happening and it's clear and concise in my opinion. So that, I don't think the NACO, it will not be, it's, it's going to look like what we've been doing following these NACO meetings.
And mainly just putting it in writing occasionally, you know, I don't think we've ever had a disagreement, but if that were ever to come up, this would be a good way to reference the, the meeting rules. So anything else I missed? Randy, your metric?
I don't believe so. It will, this is not, this is really trying to kind of, by the way these meetings have been run, not to change them.
Is there a motion to approve the revision to the meeting guidelines?
A motion to approve.
Commissioner Parks' moves, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Hurst. Discussion?
Yeah. That very first meeting, Patrick will be required to bring donuts in July.
Sort of what they care.
Yeah.
Is that what they call a friendly motion or a friendly amendment?
No, you can drop that.
What kind of donuts?
Yeah, I would say give me more details or yeah.
I would, I would say Doko would be mine. Yeah, I'd agree.
Yes. With you.
Anything else pertinent to the conversation? Hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Motion passes five to zero, movement right along. So administrator.
Okay, on, in the packet, the monthly department reports are there for Human Resources, IT, Maintenance, Public Works, Solid Waste, Treasurer and Youth Services. Any questions on anything that was in those, in the reports? Also have the financial report on here. And this is. Kind of year to date as of April 30th, showing revenues and expenditures for each fund. I'm going to set up each department, I'm assuming you guys have looked at this, but wanted to point out, the beginning fund balance, this is general fund and ending fund balance has gone up a good amount. A lot of that is because we've, our expenses are spread out over 12 months, so most of our revenue comes with property tax at the beginning of the year and then May, June. So once we get a little bit further into the summer, we're not going to get as much revenues coming in, so we need, that's why we get it more on the front end. That's why a lot of these departments or funds have an increase in their cash balance. Aging has gone down a little bit, that's probably because of revenue from the state of Kansas on grants. Public health, that's gone up also, and then noxious weed, special bridge has gone down a little bit and it's because of some of the work that's being done right now. And then Rhone Bridge is also one that has gone up a good amount again because we get a lot of the money toward the front end of the year. And a lot of the expenditures like in this department are going to be taking place over the summer, summertime. Any questions on the financial reports? The other thing I have on here, just wanted to, this is kind of preliminary look at the CIP request. This is 2024 to through 2028, all the CIP requests that have come in from departments that wanted you guys to see the entire list. There will be probably recommendations from myself that will lower some things or make cuts, but I wanted to see if you had any questions about anything in particular. I asked the directors of the various departments that have capital items to be in attendance. That's why you have a lot of directors here. And then get general direction, are there anything that you see on here? Any categories, any items that you really want me to, to look more clo, even more closely at on possible cuts? Or are there things that you want kind of left alone, kind of sacred cows?
I don't believe we've seen before the fire districts on this. They've been separate, haven't they?
They're separate, they're separate depart, or separate taxing entities, so each one is individual. So when you have the special districts total on here, that's with all nine districts, but it, they're actually split out. Each one is its completely own district. And Travis is here if you have questions on some of the CIP for the fire districts. But yeah, we wanted to, we haven't included it in the past because it's kind of a separate budget, but to be completely transparent of what we're looking at, since you guys are the governing body over all the districts, special districts and the county overall, wanted to make sure you saw both, both budgets. And the special districts is just the fire districts. Solid waste on the summer, we kind of broke that one out because it's not a property tax levied fund. The one that says county are the ones that are in the, the rest of the county ones. Most tax levy, the health capital outlay is not a tax levy. It's a transfer year end from the health department into this capital outlay. And every year there's $25,000 budgeted for possible needs in the, in their building, whether or not it gets used, but that's a, a reserve fund, but it is budgeted.
I think it's interesting to me, I might comment that, when the Moreno County Fire Districts buy their brush trucks, they're 130,000, which is 90, $100,000 less than what our district two bet on their trucks. So I think that's, I would hope that that would show the efficiency of our county organization in that aspect.
Randy, could you give a little more background as far as what you've kind of, I think you're, you've, you've gauged the temperature here a little bit already on what, what the interest in, you know, maybe trimming expenses, like what you've kind of already kind of layered in here, like the, the requests that you've received by staff exceeded what we see here. Is that true or is this showing?
This is the actual request. So I gave, I sent you all the commissioners a spreadsheet so you can place numbers, kind of, you know, work with what you feel the right allocations for each of these capital items are. On there I will have a administrator's recommendation. I've talked with Kyle, there's probably a couple of vehicles that I would remove that we may not need. And I've talked with the sheriff's office about possibly the. And I've talked with the sheriff's office about possibly the, the radios. There's about $300,000 worth of radios that are, we are mandated to have those in place by, I believe, January 1st, 2025. So it needs to take place in the next two, year and a half. But the sheriff has applied with Senator Moran's office for some federal funds allocations to cover those costs. We won't know till later this year if that is awarded. If it is, then we don't need the $300,000 in the CIP. If it's not, we're going to have to find money somewhere else. If it's pulled out of the CIP by the time we find, find out the answer from the federal government, then we would just look at reserves or year-end cash that we may have at the end of this year that would help cover the cost for the sheriff's office and the jail.
If we put that in, just leave it in the budget, and it turns out we don't need it, what are we allowed to do with that money?
Well, it's in the sheriff's budget, so it'd probably be a conversation with the sheriff about, you know, what his plans are to use that money. It wouldn't be a capital project.
It wouldn't, or would?
No, well, it wouldn't be a different CIP, I mean, he may have other things, but if it was a different project that's not already requested, he would need to come in and talk to the commission about what he was wanting to do with it.
Do you have, so you're, I'm just looking at your recommendation right now, and it looks like it's, it's about 8.7 million versus the request of, of 9.46. So there's a difference of 750,000 already.
Yeah, my, my goal was to, with my recommendation is try to get especially the tax levied amount here. That current year is 5.991, the requested is 6.980, so try to get that as flat as possible. There are some areas, cost of vehicles have gone up, cost of road and bridge materials have gone up. There are some things we really can't cut, but the cuts that I would look at making would be, do we need all the vehicles being requested, and then the radio issue, and then saving up money for 2028? Those are important projects coming up, which I'm very pleased that Harlan is planning now to start putting money aside, so that when the HVAC system in this building or roofs at the RCAT or other buildings are needed, and if it's a million, $2 million, then we don't have to bond for that, that we have cash on hand. So that's why on the 2024 amount for courthouse, or I mean, not, the CIP, that it's kind of the buildup. But I did reduce that from, I believe the request was 300,000, I lowered it to 100,000 for next year as we start the process.
Well, since there's so many directors here and we're way early, maybe we should go through this a little bit. I've got the, can you pull up the spreadsheet?
Don't have that one on this computer.
Oh.
I have it on my computer, but not that.
I can walk through it real quick, so I commented on, on the, on the, the first departments, the aging, Department of Aging and Transit, there's 20, or 232,000 in, in buses, is that, it says paid by grant, so like if we don't spend that money, if this isn't tax revenue?
There's, we get, we pay for them, and then I think we get some grant money back, 80% back. So we have to budget for the full amount, but then we get a credit back of 80%.
So that's pretty good leverage of our money. And then there was 62,000, oh, that was more buses. Is that our portion, guessing?
Yes, well, yeah, that is, yeah. And then RCAT also has bus shelters, $22,000 for each of the, each years going forward. Another cut I forgot to mention, and Barbara might be able to explain this since she is here, is in the CIP portion, there's office renovation for the RCAT building or aging building. I'll see if I, I know where it's at. Reconfiguration of 165,000, that's one where, if that's something that could be cut, I don't know if that's as necessary to spend that kind of money, if there's alternatives to make the changes needed for staffing.
Yes, I believe there are alternatives that we can explore, I want to do that with Harlan. I found two companies that do portable partition walls that look like they would do the job for us for maybe 20,000. I think actually less than that. So there are some alternatives, as long as we can meet code and, and do it appropriately.
It looks like, Randy, your recommendation is 25,000.
To see what we can do with that. It's one of those, it's important, but I think we need to be cognizant of the tax dollars on that.
Moving on, the elevator modernization of the law enforcement center.
Yes, that's for, $150,000 for each of the elevators to update them, modernize them. And Harlan has them for both to be in the, done at the same year. I don't know if it helps to do them both at the same time or do them over two different years, but.
Yeah, there's, there, when those were put in, the, the code was somewhat different than it is right now, and with the, the state's new elevator inspection program and, and some of the things that they're implementing, what we're hearing is that, that that's going to be mandated to replace those cylinders, their hydraulic elevators, but they're a single wall cylinder at that time period, and they need to be replaced with something that's, that's more, I guess has better safety features to them. So that's really what's behind that. And then also on the controllers on those, those are still pretty mechanical type operators, and those are, the parts are, are becoming pretty difficult to get. So that's, that's what's behind that project. The city would pay half, or reimburse for half of the expense per the lease agreement on those elevators.
This is the total, so we can get half of them.
Is there, are there, is there any reason we couldn't do one now, one later? Is it a safety issue?
Could be. Well, we could, we could, I think, unless the state does come in and do an inspection and then shuts us down until we get the other one, you know, the other one updated.
I may not quite understand this, it's 300,000, then our cost was 150,000?
I believe it's 150 would be our cost.
After reimbursement.
After reimbursement.
We're responsible for putting money upfront.
So for budget purposes, we would have to budget the full 300,000. On revenue side, we could put a revenue category of about 150,000. Of course, we need to make sure the city Hutchinson has it in their budget so that we'll get paid the same year that it's expended.
What do you guys think, should we do them both the same year?
Yes, for the law enforcement and here.
No, this is the two elevators at the law enforcement center.
Kind of sounds like you're being shoved into it. Some things you got a choice, some things you don't.
The city has put, put this in their budget or their, it's being requested as well.
Put it in their budget.
Well, I was going to say, we're meeting with the city later today.
I'd say if you're going to do it, or have to do it, probably be better to do them both at the same time while the people are there. Every time you bring a crew in, it adds expense.
It's not going to be cheaper five years from now, I don't think.
I was just looking through here, there's kind of a large expenditure budget. You change that from 325 to 100.
I think that's the buildup for the expenditures in 2028. I, yeah, my recommendation would be move some of that to the 2025, because it doesn't have any in the 2025, but move from '24 to '25, just defer some of that, 325,000, so that we're still building up the fund, it's just not all in the next year.
And then the youth services building, there's approximately $136,000 worth of renovations between two line items. Assuming those are things we got to do.
Yeah, there's, yeah, the one, the showers is one of them, the windows, there are things that just need to be taken care of.
One big one's $2.8 million in asphalt material. If you cut that, you can just do less.
Less roads, and then we get further behind on the schedule. Which I, I know Don last year had to cut a few miles out, and that's, could cause problems in the future, but costs just keep going up, or have gone up.
There's a bridge material, same as last year, 335,000. Colbert's, 40,000. Equipment for public works at 550,000. Is there a schedule of equipment that we have in the, in the packet for that, or is it just kind of a?
It's a overall number. Don has a plan that he has, and he probably could give you some information on that, but of all the equipment, piece of equipment that need to be replaced each year, and it may not be always 500,000, but that's what we, we budget that amount, that $550,000 to cover all the cost.
Any questions on the equipment? Don's here.
And I believe, Don, when you and I talked, you had said that you had switched to a hot mix years back because of the cost difference, right?
Why we switched line down hot mix?
Yeah, the hot mix that we're using now is less expensive than what was used, being used when you came in, right?
Right, we used, used cold mix just for patching, which is much more expensive than hot mix, and then they smeared oil and sand on top of that. We now hot mix overlay roads like state highways and everything, so actually hot mix is cheaper than cold mix by quite a bit.
Right.
Moving on, Randy talked about the radios.
And the sheriff is here now, if you want in more details about the radios that are needed. I was explaining that we, you apply with Senator Moran's office for that to be funded by the federal government.
I did, he has a congressional spending program, but that doesn't go to vote till later in the year, like I think around September, October, so we won't know till later in the year whether we're going to actually get that, get those monies. So that's why we kept them in the, in the program, just to make sure that we were covered and we could update our, our equipment as required. We're only replacing half our radios, because two years ago we just had money to, to replace our portables, so these are just for the mobile radios in our cars to be, so we could have the proper encryption and follow federal guidelines.
And is this one of those grants where you have to wait to buy them until?
I, I don't believe it's a reimbursement. Don't quote me on that, but I don't think it is. We won't actually know or be awarded it till next spring. So, we applied for it about a month or two ago. I was hoping to know something by now, but I haven't, I haven't learned anything. Later in the year, they're going to vote on it, once the money's passed and they vote on the projects and it's, it's approved, and they award the money next spring, so.
So that leaves you a timeframe where you can wait this out, or, or are you mandated to have them earlier, the radios?
So if I, if I remember right, we're mandated, I think by 1 January 2025. There are some things in place now, that's kind of put a little bit more time restrict, restraints on us, but the state isn't even up to par yet, so I think we're in a, in a sweet spot to give us a little, a little window to get, to get it right. And, and I, and I did hear the question that if, if the congressional spending went through, I wouldn't be looking to spend that money on the program. If it was put into the budget, I would probably push that back into whatever.
So, there's two line items, one's 32,000 for mobile base radios, and then the other's 188,000. Why, why didn't we do it twice?
One's for the jail, the correctional facility, and the others are the SO office.
There, there's base stations placed throughout the jail for emergencies and communication purposes.
So I think the question for, that Randy's asking is, do we put it in there with the hopes of getting the grant?
I think so.
Yeah, because if they need it by 2025, this is 2024's budget, so if we don't get it, then we'll need the money there. Yeah, we'll just leave it in the CIP then, okay.
If you leave it in there, you were mentioning earlier, then that would go, even if we get the grant, then that money would still be available to sheriff's.
It was, it'd be in his department budget, but as the sheriff said, he, he wouldn't spend it. But yeah, that would be in the general fund under the sheriff's department of 200 some thousand, or 188,000, and then 32,000 combined for, I guess, cushion. I guess that's what it would be, is to cover any other costs, but not a new, not something new, is the way I understand it from the sheriff. But yeah, it would still be in the budget.
So you could use it on another construction project?
It, it could be used for.
Because that would be capital stuff, right?
Things that would qualify to use the general fund for, yes. Or the, the gun range, I mean, deploy that to the gun range for over the next couple of years or something like that.
That's what I was thinking.
Also on the sheriff's CIP list is tasers for 22,000. Is this vehicle here for 26,000? Sheriff's.
Oh, to, of a cut?
No, I'm just seeing, oh, that's the appraiser, sorry.
Okay, yeah, the sheriff has ballistic shields for his vehicles of just under 26,000. And then the tasers lease, that's a lease, they already have it in place, was approved, I think in 2021, 2021 or 2022. So that's a five-year payment of 22,000 to replace all the tasers.
So, looking at vehicles, there's one vehicle here, 26,000 for the appraiser. There's one request from court services, which you've indicated may not be needed next year. Is somebody here for that, or do you want to talk on that?
Kyle's here from automotive, but the one for court services, they don't put a lot of miles on their vehicles. So in talking with Kyle, and I think you reached out to District Court about this, about removing it for next year, and they were okay with that.
Yes.
Then you have one here for the health department?
We do, and we did just get one for the health department, so if the sheriff's department's vehicles are approved, I would like to transfer, save one of those old ones back and transfer it to the health department, so that would eliminate the 28,000. That whole behalf. That whole behave.
So there's a request in here for a jail vehicle.
Yes, um, they have a old, what year is that, two thousand and thirteen Ford Taurus? They bought used from the highway patrol. It was planned to be replaced two years ago, and that got cut. So it was planned to be replaced this year, but due to the lack of the budget, the jail agreed to transfer that thirty-three thousand back to the sheriff for patrol vehicles. So it's kind of transferring vehicles back and forth. Part of the issue this year is the special equipment fund. Um, this is the first year for it. But I felt we could get better value by selling the vehicles on Purple Wave instead of trading them in. That made it necessary to budget for more for the vehicles, because the money doesn't go back into the special equipment fund. It has to go back into the general fund.
So we do have two hundred and sixty-eight thousand vehicles for the sheriff's office. How many vehicles is that?
That would be four patrol vehicles, one truck, and two admin vehicles. And we've really fallen behind in the last couple of years on replacements. We changed from a four-year to a five-year rotation. But due to all the big problems with vehicles, it's been almost a year from ordering a vehicle to receiving it. So that just adds about another year to it. I'm concerned if we don't start replacing them, it, it's gonna just keep piling up on us, on mileage.
Any questions on the sheriff's vehicles? There's, um, one vehicle from maintenance for twenty-nine thousand.
And they do have in their budget to get, replace one this year, so we could probably knock that one out for next year.
Do you have like the vintage of the current, current vehicle?
What's that?
How, how old is the current vehicle?
The one we would get rid of would be a ninety-seven E three fifty that was transferred from the youth shelter to maintenance.
Pre-old. It's that van that we replaced a couple of years ago. We replaced the van in the, uh, youth services a couple of years ago. And they transferred that older van forward to.
Right, Harland actually has two of the older vans from the youth services now.
And then the youth services has a vehicle for thirty thousand.
They do, but we could probably get by another year on that one. It doesn't have a whole lot of miles, um, I think it's driven. It's only driven about five thousand miles a year, so it shouldn't be any issues.
All right. I think that's all the vehicles, any other questions on vehicles? There's, uh, so IT has, uh, about, uh, mounting about six hundred and thirty-three thousand. The first one here is for digital ortho photography. Mike, she, she talked to us about that, but it's a hundred and ten thousand.
So what that is, is for the appraiser, they would like to have new digital ortho photography, but it would also be what they call oblique. So you can turn that photography on its side to measure buildings with. And they believe that that would reduce the amount of time they spend out in the field. This is also a joint project with the city of Hutchinson, so this is only, uh, I think fifty percent of, of the total cost of the project. So the city would be picking up the other half. And they, this is actually a reimbursement to them, cause they already have a contract with the vendor. So, um, this was a request from the county appraiser. They believe that they'll spend less time in the field measuring buildings if they have that, that product. So it would be flown probably in February or March of twenty-four, cause you always wanna fly that one, there's no leaves on the trees. So that's kind of a brief overview of that project.
What is, can you not get this information like through Google Earth?
We, we, currently what we use right now comes from the state at no cost to us, but it doesn't do the oblique. It doesn't turn on its side where they can, can measure the front of a building. It's only overhead, so that's the difference. But we do currently, every year the state flies, um, new photography for agricultural use and they give it to us for free. So that's what we're using right now, because we didn't, if we could get it for free, that's what we wanted to do.
I guess my question would be, um, so it would, it would, uh, it would make the jobs of our appraisers easier. Um, would we, would we be able to recoup that hundred and ten thousand dollars somewhere in there or?
I'd hate to speak for the county appraiser. I think there's probably some fuel savings and probably some wear and tear on vehicle savings. I don't, I don't wanna speak for him, but in my experience, when I worked for the county appraiser's office, I, I don't think that there's personnel savings on that. But he might have a different outlook on that, I, I don't know. But in my years of experience there.
That was gonna be my question too, Mike, what it does to the, the labor side of it. Whether they need to free them up, cause they have too much to do having them in the field. But if you can't answer that, that's kind of where I was going, the same direction with that as well. It seems that I've watched even prior to being here, the amount of software programs we've put in to, to simplify life, but we never cut anything on the other end of it. So I mean, I'm not saying it isn't a good tool, but it seems like it never goes hand in hand with reducing other expenses for some reason. So if it's, if it's a great effective tool to save labor, then let's save some labor. I mean, and I know you can't speak for that, but that's kind of what my feelings were.
I will say that not only this particular product, but, but many pieces of software we have. Although they don't necessarily let us reduce our labor force, they do make the force that we have more productive so that we can try to not add to that, to that force, if that makes any sense.
Here again, is this one of those, we pay the upfront cost and then reimbursed by the city?
No, we would reimburse them. They, they have a contract with the vendor that does this already. So they're planning to do this with or without us, I think.
Randy, I'd like to have some report back on this to where we could actually see what the total cost is and what the returns are and ROI type thing on this.
I can, I can get with.
Maybe the appraiser could help with that.
I, I think he would need to address that.
What's the difficult with the aerial view of outlining the building? You can still get measurements off that, is it just because the building may be split use or not knowing the storefront?
I think there's some of that also from the top, you know, if, if a house has a two-foot overhang on each side. Whatever it happens to be, it's just not quite as, and what we get now is what they call a twelve-inch pixel resolution. So there can be a variation of twelve inches one way or the other on that pixel for that piece of photography. We're looking at, we're still looking in the very rural areas at twelve inch, but in the more populated areas, it would be six and, and densely populated, it would be three-inch, um, pixel resolution. So their ability to be more accurate would be a lot closer.
Looks like you have some miscellaneous items here, um, some, uh, network storage. Approximately sixty thousand or so.
What we do on that is we replace that gear every four years. So we are, that's just a buildup fund. We, we probably, I think the fund will be, is scheduled to be built up to enough for us to make the purchase in, in twenty-four. But much of that money is in the reserve, reserve fund. So we don't, cause that's gonna be close to a two hundred thousand dollar project. So rather than just having that all in one big bang, we, we try to level that out a little.
The last item on, on IT was software maintenance. The last year we adopted a, a number of fifty-one thousand, this year is three hundred and sixty-five.
So what we did there was, in the past, the majority of that money was in the, um, general fund, my, my, um, operational budget. And, and conversations with Randy and, and then we, we decided that that should all be over here in the special equipment fund. So we real, there's, we reduced it to nothing in the operational budget, but it's all over here now.
So there's an increase, it's just where you're recording?
Well, I always throw in around a five percent increase, because these always go up. Every year they always all go up. And there's really no way for us to predict how much they're gonna go up, cause they don't tell us. They just, we get a bill and then we try to negotiate with them, but many times it's minimal, if anything, that we can get back on that. So, um, that's kind of the deal on that. Now, I, I will say that we are in the middle of a, of a review of all of those items. And I am hoping to, I haven't asked Randy for time yet this week, but I'm hoping to get with him and discuss some potential of reducing that number. But I think to do that, we would need to also sit down with you as a board and kind of explain what we can do and can't do and, and get some direction on what, what you wanna do. Because, you know, over the last three or four years, we've had a pretty big push to use more technology. And so we've done that and, but this is kind of what comes from that also. So, um, is that right? Am I saying that right, Randy?
Right, and the more you take, IT takes on, as we try to find savings, it may increase the need for staff also of IT. We won't be paying a software company maybe, but doing it in-house is gonna take staff.
And you know, that comes right back into that program, talking about it always increases something on the other end, it seems like. And so is it a real savings for the county? Does it really make it more efficient?
That, that's what that software support line is.
And I misspoke, it looks like there's a, I was reading this wrong, there's a few other items. You've got, um, fifty-five thousand dollars in computers, which is about where it was last year, between two line items, laptops, workstations. And then this Tyler New World, um, this is software for, uh, law enforcement center and EMS.
So that's their annual support on their, um, on their main piece of software. That piece of software covers nine-one-one, flows into, uh, PD and SO, into their records division. And then it also does, uh, the, the corrections facility. It is an extremely complex piece of software. But there again, the cost of that, we get reimbursed sixty percent of that from the city. And then, um, also twenty percent will come back to us from EMS, but I think they'll probably bill us back for that too, so.
They'll pay through that in the general fund.
Okay. Any other questions for IT? Thanks, Mike. Solid Waste has, um, hundred thousand in building improvements. Five hundred and thirty, five hundred and thirty-five thousand in, in, uh, a cat compactor, fire train rebuild. And then another about the same in a dozer rebuild and then eighty-five thousand in a dozer undercarriage. Eighty thousand dollars in two pickups. So it's two here, but two pickups. It's two, two. Questions on those? About to a million five in capital expense.
That is part of your, I know you have a, uh, a plan, so much equipment every year. That's already part of that.
Yeah, that's correct.
And, uh, the last item is about, uh, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand over four fire districts for, uh, looks like, uh, two brush trucks, a tender truck and a fire engine. This is easier to read than that.
Oh, is it?
Any questions on the fire? Does help a little bit? Randy?
Yeah.
Give a little bit of feedback.
Gives me enough to make some changes and that'll be move forward to the next phase. Cause of course this is just the CIP portion, we're working on the payroll portion right now upstairs. And then the operational budget, all the departments have already sent in their request. We'll put that together and have a preliminary budget probably at the end of June.
And just to be clear, um, you sent a spreadsheet out to all of us and you want us to provide our individual input?
That would help, yeah.
When do you want that by?
The next couple of weeks would be great.
There's two spreadsheets, one is the CIP sheet we just talked through, and then the other is the outside agencies, right? Is everybody clear on that?
That's all I have.
All you got, all right. Commission reports. When did I start last? Mr. White, will you have anything this morning?
Won't do anything this week.
Yes, sir.
I've heard all the department heads have been working with the county administrator to get the preliminary work done on this, uh, budget, two thousand and twenty-four. Wanna thank all the graduates, congratulate all the graduates that just graduated from high school and those that are graduating from other schools around, elementary as well as the junior high. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of comments regarding the athletic prowess of our, of our kids that are going to school, high school. But there's a lot of others that are involved in things like forensics and FFA, band, a lot of other extracurricular activities that I think sometimes need to be mentioned, that what a great job they're doing and being, and they involved in extracurricular activities. And, uh, last week we talked about, uh, question, got some information back on the interest that our reserve funds are being, uh, invested in. And happy to say that that looked pretty good. There's some pretty good, that, that our county's doing a, a pretty good job, really good job with regarding to investing, uh, in the reserve funds and keeping it on top of that. So thank the treasurer and administrator.
Sheriff attended the memorial.
Sheriff attended the memorial service last week, I believe it was, I appreciate that. Great service, appreciated being there. And so thank you for doing that, you folks. I appreciate everything that law enforcement does for us to protect us, and I just wanted to know.
Lot a lot going on. Ron Hurst and I and Randy and some of the others attended a special meeting on this water project in Yoder. Had a good meeting. We'll just kind of the ball's in their court now as to how we go forward.
Thank you. I don't think I have anything that hasn't already been said. Appreciate staff being here today, appreciate the clerk's office and their work this morning on on the canvassing of of two elections that went out, went went off without a hitch, as usual. Good job there. We do have another meeting scheduled at the jail conference room at eleven.
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty. It'll be a joint meeting with the city council and city council of Hutchinson and and us, so. Hope for seeing you guys there. Unless there's anything else on the agenda, I'll go ahead and adjourn until eleven thirty. Thank you.